We have private public comments. We're asked that we move the approval of records to the end. With that...
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Diana Araujo and I'm here with the Central Falls Prevention Coalition. And these are the Tobacco Ambassadors and also Central Falls Youth Council. Thank you. And the following statement is from Bernia, the Director of the Central Falls Prevention Coalition, and just a brief description of what the Coalition is. It's a group of community members that promotes substance abuse awareness, education, and prevention among the community, families, and youth in the city of Central Falls. So the following statement, again from Ms. Carter, the Director of the Central Falls Prevention Coalition, is as follows. "It saddens me that the councilman will take time away from the council to stop enforcement of fine and railtors for selling tobacco products that are getting in the hands of the youth of Central Falls. It has been brought to my attention that the councilman owns the property where Pae Young Liquor Store is located, and it is not fair to take advice of one tenant to change a policy that has brought so much positive press and attention to the youth in the community." I strongly ask the council to read the Providence Journal published on April 4th, which was passed around, as well with the information from the Tobacco Control regarding tobacco flavor products. Finally, it's important to know that other communities are following our footsteps, such as Pawtucket, our neighboring city, that has reduced the banning of flavored tobacco products right since the age of 21. Again, we're modeling good policies in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's public comment. Mr. Luzier?
I'd like to ask a question regarding... What she just stated.
I think she's stating introduction to one of your amendments. See, and when it... Mr. Luzier, please let me finish. It's strictly introduction. They're aware of that. Strictly introduction. No discussion tonight. You'll have your chance, Mr. Luzier.
But I do have a right to...
Mr. Luzier, how do you know it's you?
The only way to introduce...
And the key word is introduce. We're going to introduce it tonight. No discussion.
But I respectfully request to...
Mr. Luzier, thank you very much for that public comment. Thank you. We are done.
Hello. My name is Israel Jadi. You call me John. I'm 17 years old in the 7th grade SCF High School. And I am representing the Tobacco Ambassadors in the Central Falls Youth Prevention Council. I'm here regarding the introduction of amendment to removal of strict fines and reduce the amount of fines and gifts, no fine.
Okay, I hate to interrupt, but tonight is just an introduction. The next meeting will be discussion of the amendment that's being proposed by one of the council members. Tonight is strictly introduction. No, there's no discussion on the amendment being proposed.
This is still a comment based on the introduction. And these are just scripts that the youth put together. So if you pay for him to finish...
And again, I'd like to ask that you attend the next meeting, which the city clerk can give you the date tonight. Again, and then we're going to have discussion on the amendment that's being proposed. Tonight is strictly introduction.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. We will come back on the following...
We can get you the date. It's the second Monday of each month. If the city clerk would please give the date of the... When the amendment will come up. Tonight is strictly introduction.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Luzier, please.
I think they should speak. I think this is under public comments.
It's introduction.
They should speak on any...
Mr. Luzier. Mr. Luzier, this is all regarding your amendment, which is currently in the introduction stage. They're going to have their say next meeting.
They should have a right to speak on it now under public comment.
Mr. Luzier, it's just introduction.
It doesn't... Regardless of... It doesn't matter. They can talk about whatever they want. It's public comment. They can talk about pink socks and purple underwear if they want.
I think, in all honesty, I think we're putting the card before the law.
It doesn't matter. The public comment is for the public to talk about whatever they want.
Do you want to speak? Go ahead. But this is where I... I don't want to rebuttal. I'm trying to avoid a rebuttal here tonight regarding amendment that's just being introduced here tonight.
They already said we couldn't go up there. So what's the whole point of me going up there if they're already disrespected and I'm like, nah? Okay.
You should speak. Okay.
He already said we couldn't go up there. So what's the whole point?
You can come up and speak. I'm trying... Yeah, I'm trying to avoid a rebuttal.
Okay, so we'll come back.
No, come on up and speak. Again, I don't want a rebuttal from one of the council members. Let's just wait.
Thank you. We'll come back when...
Come on up. If you're not... Come on up and speak.
Now what can I do? I'm already...
I'm sorry. No, we need to because I need to be able to record. We have people talking.
No, but I'm loud. I'm pretty sure you can hear me. And I don't want to put my voice out there with that.
We can't do that. Can you hear me? Because I'm pretty sure you're all...
You're facing this way. I can hear you, but facing that way.
Can you hear enough?
Okay, let's use the microphone.
We have a mic. You got it. The mic.
Yeah, you can lift it up.
Lift it up.
Hello, my name is Jessica DePater. I am 16 years old and I'm in the 2nd grade of Central Falls High School. And I'm in 3rd. I can't... I can't relax. I'm not doing it because they're already disrespected. Nah, because they're disrespectful.
You're the future.
Yeah, but they... I don't hate that because at the end of the day, he... Nah, because at the end of the day, he already said that we can't do it. So what makes him think that I'm gonna go up there?
That's one opinion.
No, because this is me. At the end of the day, he already said we couldn't be up there. This is me speaking my mind right now. I don't have to do something. I don't care. He already said. He already said we're up. He already said we didn't have to be up there. So at the end of the day, I don't have to be up there because he already said what you come down, am I right? Because I was mad disrespectful.
No, listen. I don't want a discussion with the councilman here tonight who is opposing, who's presenting this amendment.
Yeah, but you're not going to hear it because at the end of the day, if you really wasn't hearing it, when you was up there, you was already going to do it. So at another day, you don't...
It's just in the introduction stage. It's not in the discussion stage.
Make sure you register to vote in two years.
Yeah. I mean, they got me here. I'm not the one. I don't want to say listen to him, but at the end of the day, he's not...
Anyone else?
Because he ain't even listening.
John, please.
Anyone else would come back. Come on up.
He's not listening. Because at the end of the day, he wants to do it anyway.
I think we're just going to come back.
Yeah, we can come back when they're... Not come back when they really want to hear you. Come back.
You can introduce yourself.
My name's Derek Rardino. I'm with the Rhode Island Department of Health. Here with Andy Santos. We're here to share some promising new data with you. I've shared it with Sonia. And so it's very, very promising. We think that you're going to feel good about it. So for the first time ever, we've been able to compare teen tobacco product use rates by product type, meaning by flavors, by e-cigarettes, as well as to do it at the city and town level. We've never been able to do that. All our data is collected statewide. Statewide, I'm sure you've already heard, because I know you've had a lot of education, that our tobacco youth rate for youth is over 25%. So 25% of our youth are saying within the last month that they smoked a tobacco product. So, and I'm sure you also know that CDC strategies around tobacco use and tobacco control, there's two that they're very... That we have a lot of data around. One is restrict access to tobacco products to youth and keep prices high. It has a winning strategy and it goes on across all the states. So what I'm here to share is that you might recall in 2013, Providence passed what we call now Tobacco Model Policy. And that policy requires license. It's identical to your policy. It limits flavors to places where adults frequent and it bans discounts. So we actually had data back on this and that's what I'm so excited to share. So what we have found is that in Providence, 3.2% of the teens reported using flavored tobacco products within the last 30 days. That's 3.2 versus over 25%. In one socket, that rate was three times higher and in Cranston, it was two times higher. Now, for public health, it's very hard to affect prevalence rates to say that you have a strategy that actually changes the rate of smoking. But we think that's what we have here now. So we're in the process, working with your enforcement folks, of course, with the youth, working around data, collecting data around what you're doing here. And we believe that you are going to see a difference. You know, where you're starting from is all of your stores in Central Falls were observed to have flavored products. So we know they're in the stores and we've had a policy for a while. And we also know that there were a number of violations. So I guess I'm here to say, you know, I understand that you've had a thorough and thoughtful public process. You've invested a lot in these policies and you've done it very thoughtfully and you've really done it based on facts and evidence and the data that your own youth have collected. So you guys are one of seven municipalities doing this. You're one of 11 municipalities that have a license requirement. So stay the course. We are going to have Central Falls-related data coming out in June. It's going to reflect two stars visits where the kids go in to observe these stores and it's going to have two enforcement visits. And next year, we're going to do that again. So you're going to have data and you're going to know whether this policy works or not. Don't change course. You're on the right path.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that earlier.
It's okay.
Lorraine Semer.
Good evening. Lorraine Semer, 76th and 7th Street, Central Falls. I just wanted the council to know that as far as I know, and what people have told me, that Pawtucket Connett Street Transfer Station is almost dead. But we know in Rhode Island that things resurrect. So I just want you to know that I live on the border of Pawtucket and, oh, Central Falls, but on the border. And I object to this transfer station that would be, if built, a, you know, a transfer station, garbage transfer station of the East Coast. There were plans to make this thing coming off the railroad over there on Conner Street. So I just wanted to let the council know. Also, I've been wanting to make a comment about the way the council treats my Ward Five councilman. And tonight, also the way those poor kids were treated. And they went out of here with a sour taste in their mouth. I know, you know, they're young children and, you know, they were riled and they are riled. And I hope that when they come back, that you apologize again. Oh, you didn't apologize, but just, you know, I guess there was some kind of misunderstanding. You wanted to silence the councilman and in doing that, you silenced these children because of, I don't know, I'm not even sure of the amendment that is being proposed here. But anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you recite a CIGO?
Good evening, council. Councilwoman. I just want to bring in a couple of points. I noticed on tonight's agenda, we still are not speaking about this year's budget. Typically, in the past, we've started the budget process in March and we're already in April and this meeting is not going to include the budget. So I'm wondering when we might be starting budget process. And also, I think it's a little more critical this year because we're coming out from state oversight. And I want to know how that impacts us and how you see, you know, doing this budget is different than maybe last year's budget or budgets under the receivership. So if we could get some information on that possibly for the next council meeting. And if anybody, any council person wants to reach out to me if they have additional information, I'd appreciate that as well. Also, can we get clarification on the $700,000 that, or our tax payer dollars, now that it might be state, may be federal, may be local, that were used 115 in Illinois when I sat on the council? I was told by the F O that we would not be using tax dollars, or local or our seat tax dollars for that project. There's $700,000 asterisk on the port and I just wondered if anybody had additional information about that. And by the way, I want to thank Councilwoman Rivera for getting some additional information regarding grants. I've been looking for that for a few years. I look forward to reading that. And I think that was it. But thank you, everybody, for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Edna Pullman.
Thank you. Edna Pullman, 68 Notre Dame Street. I also want to comment with Lorraine. I think that if we can get young people to a council meeting or to participate, we should listen as a council. I think the council body should listen. And I thank you for speaking up. And I know they don't ever give Tommy any chance to speak up. He needs some backbone when he's right, you know? And so I thank you very much for speaking up. These young people have a right to come here and talk. They're going to be the future council people, the future mayor of the city. Some of these people are. And to turn them off like that, I think that was very disrespectful. And you know better about it.
Edna, can I jump in?
No.
I want my...
No, 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 no. I want my public comment. You can talk out.
No, no, I want to clarify something. The reason...
You stop now.
I wanted to avoid conflict between those young people and I know Tom wanted to speak. It's just introduction of an amendment here tonight. That's all it is. And you should know what an introduction is. Just that. No discussion on that.
They have a right to come and speak on anything.
Absolutely.
Whether you got an introduction or...
I was going to clear it. I don't want a discussion.
You shouldn't be second guessing what they're going to say.
I didn't want a confrontation between one of the council members.
This is not a dictation.
And that, that is correct.
This is a democracy.
And I do my best, Edna.
And you're trying to be a dictator.
And I'm proud of what I do. Thank you very much.
You've been trying to be a dictator. Those kids...
That is not true.
Those kids had a right to speak. I don't care what they wanted to tell you. They should have been able to speak. How are we going to say to the young people, we want you to participate, when you don't let them speak? Whether or not they're speaking on an ordinance, whatever you have on this agenda, they have a right to come here and speak.
That is correct.
The other thing I would like to comment in one budget, you know, this is April. We should be looking at the budgets for the coming year. I don't see any financial data realistically. I don't even know if the council gets any financial data of what we spent this year, where our budget's going, what kind of surplus we're going to have, which I'm assuming we're going to have a surplus of. Also, an audit. The audit was supposed to take place by the end of last year for 2017. No one has seen that audit as far as I know. I don't know if the council has seen that audit. But that audit should be public. If we want transparency, we need to have these kind of figures and these things brought before and let the people take a look. The other thing I would like to say is tax rebate on motor vehicles. I don't know who's got any rebate. The state of Rhode Island posted in the paper back in January, but funds had gone out to municipalities, one of which was noted in the paper with Central Falls, that there was going to be a minor rebate to the taxpayers of Central Falls on motor vehicles. I have never gotten that. I don't know if anybody else has. And I'm, my taxes are all paid now. So the question is, where's that tax money? Is it going to be paid? I've had a number of people already ask me about it. And I've got a phone call. I put a phone call into one of my reps to ask Matty Yelo, did he honestly pass that through or is the city of Central Falls sitting on that money for whatever reason, which it shouldn't? The other thing is, I tried calling the finance office during the week and I got a line. The phone call came into a desk where the individual is out on sick leave. And I don't think phone calls should be going to a phone where people are out on sick leave. If, you know, and I called Steve's office and all I got was leave a message, we'll get back to you. I didn't leave a message, so. But if you try to, you know, access anything, you should at least get someone who's working currently and not to a phone that it's an individual who's out on sick leave. Thank you.
Thomas Luzier.
Good evening. Thomas Luzier, 1072 Alonse Delano. I get up to speak as a public taxpayer. First, we should never stop anyone from speaking on the public comments according to whatever they wish to discuss. It's their right, their five minutes, and they should talk about anything they want. I was not going to conflict with that. My comments, which I was coming up, is that there seems to be some misdirection to the people who came up. The legislation that was submitted does not change at all youth purchasing either tobacco or flavored tobacco. No one under 21 is affected according to the present legislation in our law. And nothing that is being, let's say, recommended for change would affect that. It would only affect adults. Secondly, I come up to this public comment because in some respects, I cannot be recognized at the council. I consistently, according to some of my constituents, have requested certain things to be placed on the agenda. They have not been allowed. And it's not just one month. It's been going on since last year. The comments about the budget, council, I've been requesting budget review since last year. In January, Councilwoman Fonseca and myself requested a budget workshop so we could ask questions of each department's on the budget. What we received in February was a budget review by Mr. Mocianis without substantial questions on any of the individual budgets. I have, since that time, every month, have asked for budget workshops to discuss the line items in various department budgets. That has not been placed on the agenda. I've also asked on behalf of constituents to put stuff on the agenda for discussion. They have not been allowed. I have requested resolutions and condolences and congratulations that I requested be listed. They are not. It's listed under one category, resolutions of congratulations and condolences. I came into City Hall this week, this past week, last week, in fact, last Friday, to request all documents regarding the budget. Those documents would have been council resolutions and congratulations. Also, they were not available. I come to every meeting, especially when we review the minutes, and I object. And I know it frustrates my fellow members of the council. It frustrates me that I have to receive minutes that are not accurate, that are not concise, that are not representative of the discussions that took place at the meeting. I have continually requested at every meeting that my comments be included in the minutes. They are not. They're listed as city council members' questions, whatever department. What those questions are, are not included. Who answers have not been written in the minutes and elaborated on. I speak out of frustration because I served as city clerk for over 12 years. I was certified as a professional city clerk nationally. I object to the minutes and I will object again tonight on the minutes because they do not completely purport what took place at the meeting. We have a video, yes. But the written minutes are the official minutes of the council. I have asked, and I'll ask again, that the comments and questions and answers be put in the record and included in our deliberations. 10, 15, 20, or 100 years from now, a resident of Central Falls can go back in the records and find out what the councilman asked. What were the concerns of the day? What were the answers? They cannot know. There is frustration, I know, of the members of the council because meetings are being dragged out because we are not getting the answers that we asked for. I, tonight, will ask for department heads to be present and to answer questions that I've been asking for the last, since last year. I've been to City Hall in the last two weeks at least four or five times, attempting to meet with department heads, especially on financial matters. Unable, unavailable, documents not readily available, are not present, and arrange for meetings that have been canceled and not rescheduled. As a city council member and as a member of the public and a taxpayer, we need accountability. I was elected not as a rally supporter of the mayor, but as an individual who wished to question the right way of governing. I compliment the mayor and the administration. There are a lot of positive things that have taken place in the city. But this administration should be answerable to me as a councilman, to every member, resident and taxpayer, and to those youth that were here who wanted to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and members of the public. I have some great news to share with you. Last month, we were awarded not one, but two awards for the Great Complete Streets Ordinance that was passed by this body and signed by Mayor Diosa. The first one is from Gross Mart, Rhode Island. And the second one is from the Congress of the New Urbanism, the New England Chapter. So I'll pass those around for the council to look at and then we'll make sure to put them on display here in City Hall.
Andy Santos.
Thank you.
Jean Morrison.
I'm Jean. I live up there and I attend a few of the meetings. I have a question for all these people, you know, for the council members. I, of course, am having lots of problems with registered care. My question is, isn't it, or shouldn't it be, they should have identification and their vehicles should have IDs. They don't have anything at all. The last, okay, three weeks ago, the last trip that I had was terrible. I withdrew all over creation and they picked me up and they said my name and then they said, "I'm the driver." They didn't, they shouldn't have picked me up. They tried to drop me off somewhere in Johnson. Now, that, I thought I'd get kicked back. Not that they'd want to kick that man, but, I mean, you know, it's scary. Though, I don't know, but I wish someone would answer and find out whether it was, they should have IDs or not. The other thing is, as an observer of all these meetings, and especially tonight, I feel bad that there's so much controversy between the council members. And I think that the president of the council is doing a good job. I think he is doing his best. May I don't know all even else about meetings, because I've only been coming here three years, so, pretty strange. And I observe everything, you know, that's going on. And I do think that they should be able to speak. But I understand the reason because the city council members said they could have their say in the next meeting. Now, I don't know about that which is always well. But I think they, I would have gotten a little hot under the power too. But I think they have to be sat down and explain why, you know, this happened here. So, thank you for listening. Oh, and I have to add that I'm getting help from TIA, sign ladies, from someone to help me that this was just a bad situation. It's not only my fault, but it's all over the island, and I don't see why in heaven's name something can't be done. I don't know. It's not fair to be able to. Another point I just brought up too, I'm always saying we should have a, a community center. Because every city has one. And I'm in a close now, I fed him up, and I enjoy these meetings, and we all do a fine job, I think, every one of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next side is Executive Communications, Department of Financial and Public.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazzia.
Mr. Chairman, under Executive Communications, as I have in the past, I wish to ask questions of the different departments.
Thank you.
This is the time when council members give review and question department heads and others regarding the communications that have been submitted. I wish to, at the last council meeting, Mr. Chairman, I asked that department head to be present and be available to answer questions on their budgets, their monthly reports. At the last meeting, I put that on the record, Mr. Chairman. I failed to see it included in the record, but I did ask that it be included. I sent a letter or an email to the council president and mayor and city clerk and city solicitor requesting that financial information beyond the agenda to be discussed. It is not. At this time, under the executive communications, Mr. Chairman, I asked to ask questions. I also wish to note that I did submit a letter or a document to the city clerk's office, and I just questioned if the council members received it. It says, "All city council officials. You are again hereby notified that I wish to be publicly and personally notified of all events, documents, and other requested or required materials to me either in the public office or as a resident and taxpayer of Central Falls by only the three following needs. One, my home at 1072 Longdale Avenue, Central Falls, Rhode Island. Secondly, by my cell number, which I'll give it to the council and its public record there, 1-225-9988. Third is my personal email, which I stated to the council since December of 2016. That is the only email that I will be utilizing. It's email, lowercase, m-a-y-o-r-t-lazzia@icloud.com. Or you can send me information in person. Thank you very much for your cooperation, Thomas Lazzia, city council member. I ask that this be distributed to all departments, individuals, staff, and to the city council members as a whole." Did you receive it?
Right here.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, departmental financial reports, can we begin to question?
What department, Mr. Lazzia?
We will start with the first one, if it's possible, Mr. Chairman, the city clerk's
Is there a particular line item?
There's a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. I understand that there was a, an accident that took place that closed the city clerk's office. I asked for information on that. It was an insurance matter that required insurance to make a cash or a detailed review of the damages. Could I request that the city clerk provide documentation on what took place? And I have asked this in the past, of what was the accident, what it entailed, the insurance settlement, where are those funds, and any other details on that matter? I have also requested that the finance report from all the departments, but the city clerk's office first, that it provide, this one only provides a one-month review. I've asked that we get a yearly review, the budgeted amount, the variance, and a comparison to the prior year. I've requested this in the past, Mr. Chairman, and I requested it again. Right now, we are looking at one month. We are only looking at that month, not knowing what was the budgeted amount, how much is still available, and how much was spent in the previous year. As a financial representative overlooking and being responsible for the finances as a council member of our city, we need financial documentation. I've stated this in the past. I'm stating again and requesting it again, Mr. Chairman, that one-month line item of what has taken place on that particular month, which is in, we are looking at February, February 1st to February 28th. It's a month and a half away. I'm requesting if we can have a further detail, Mr. Chairman. Do we have that presently?
You understand that this is revenue, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if you have questions on expenses, that comes out of the finance report?
It's not listed here also.
So you receive, per our charter, a report for each of the departments that receive funds, and that is what you receive. It is a one-month.
Correct.
So this is revenue, this is not a budgeted...
It does not provide what the budgeted amount is, which is normal, or how much is that month, how much projected revenue do we expect for the remainder of the year. That's what we, I'm requesting, and what was done in the past. I know we don't like to hear about the past, but as a fiduciary responsibility of financial, this financial condition of our city, we need financial documentation. We are not getting it by just one line item of what the revenue is for February. I request further documentation.
So we're all ready to move forward.
Thank you. Next, we have, Mr. Chairman, Department of Code Enforcement. I have gone to the Department of Code Enforcement in Public Works this week. I am looking at, I requested what streets in our city are we possibly looking to repave. They are doing work on Tucker and Benford Street. That is a possibility. But then there are other streets in our community that last year during the budget hearings they listed. I would like to request a listing of all the possible streets of what we may be doing this year.
Tom, I just wanted to note that this is a financial report, not, not a department update, strictly financial.
Financial, there is money budgeted. What do we expect to spend, and where are those funds are going to be expended? I would assume that we are looking at paving Tucker Street and Benford. What other streets are possibly in, that are going to be utilizing our city funds? If we can go on to the, and further documentation on that prior year and budget year. Next, Mr. Chairman, is the finance report. We deferred action on it last month because it was an error in its listing, so none of the financial reports were, were acted on, I believe. We are only receiving the financial department, January 18 revenue, January 2000, it should be 18, but it's 2008. It's 208 expense. And then capital. I appreciate the capital up that has been provided, but the revenue and expense account, going back to January, I've asked that the finance director be present to answer questions. At the last meeting, I was told, "If you need to speak to him, go to the office." I did go to the office, Mr. Chairman, requesting information, documentation, copies. It was not, unfortunately, she could not provide it. We scheduled the meeting. Unfortunately, they had to cancel the meeting, Mr. Chairman. I came back to discuss it with the acting finance director, and unfortunately, no other meeting and no other attempt to discuss these matters were available over the last two weeks, Mr. Chairman. So at the last meeting, I requested that someone from the finance department be here to discuss the budget and line items and questions that we have, and I have. I'm not sure if any other council members have questions, but I have questions on the finances of the city. I also requested at that time and for the last, since December of this past year, a copy of the audit report, which was due to the city by December 31st of 2017. I was told at the subsequent meeting, Mr. Chairman, that the audit report has been extended. I think it was extended through January. Then it was being finalized for September, I believe.
Let me interject, Mr. Lazzia. We're going to have a meeting on April 23rd regarding the audit, and someone from the Moncom Company will be here to answer questions regarding the audit.
I'll be going in.
That's April 23rd.
That's due, Mr. Chairman, because I wasn't...
Well, I just got a memo dated for this council meeting.
April 23rd.
Which is one of the meetings that we always leave open the last one we have.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, but I asked since January that we have an opportunity to discuss the audit report before it's being presented. There are various questions that I have on the audit from prior year, from that year, which is not this year, it was the previous budget, that we can discuss it in open session. I was asked by constituents of mine that they have not been allowed the opportunity to question aspects of the audit report. We hope to do that, Mr. Chairman. I hope on April 23rd that the council has a, first of all, a private review with the auditors so we can ask pertinent questions, and then a public meeting to answer any questions that the council may have and the public may have on the audit report. Now, April 23rd, Mr. Chairman, what time?
6:00 P.M.
Is that public going to be available to ask questions also, Mr. Chairman?
I'll leave that up to the Moncom associates, whoever's in the audit, if they're willing to ask questions.
But we can ask questions.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Since there is no one here from the finance department, Mr. Chairman, I'll move on to the fire department. I see, are you representing the fire department?
Not in this regard.
Not in this regard, no.
Okay, I'll address the audience that's on your document, nothing else.
Then I won't burden you with the questions today, Mr. Chairman. My comments that I previously stated will go to the fire department. I've asked that they provide more than just a monthly revenue in comparison of prior I've done that in the past, Mr. Chairman. I've asked that we do it again, Mr. Chairman. Next would be the police department. Let me compliment the police department. They provide a February 2018 review, a year-to-date review for 2018, and a year-to-date review of 2017. I compliment the chief and the deputy chief here, the major, on being more responsive to at least our reporting system that I've requested, and I've asked that they continue in, possibly also tweak it a little bit. I do want to speak to the police chief. I've asked that the, on the request I submitted to the council president, that the chief report to the city council by June on what actions and what determinations he have come to with regards to our public buildings, especially our school buildings. I submitted a request months ago regarding security. I think that we should have a plan in place, and I did see the week after that the administration began a, a, a plan with the police chief. I only ask, as I have in the previous months, that the police chief report back to us on what items they've determined to be corrected, what corrective actions they are looking at, and any other items regarding schools and public properties. We'll have to address that at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
You said June. I saw the memo in June.
Correct.
Thank you.
To report back by June.
I'll, so the major has some update?
Yes, the colonel is aware of the date of June that was requested for that. There is ongoing testing being done at multiple schools. However, that information is relatively public because we don't want them aware of it as we're testing to find out if there is any discrepancies or we can correct them. So each report will be conducted school by school, and that will be cleared by the deadline.
Do we have, do we also looking at public buildings, as I mentioned?
We're concentrating on schools right now, but be aware of the...
And at any time coming before the council, we can meet in executive session if it's determined that the public should not...
Let's talk about any member of the public in advance.
Okay. Then I'd recommend that we meet in executive session if need be on that.
Thank you, major.
Thank you, sir.
Next side.
Schedule bills. We have ordinance amending Chapter 20, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3, Fire Arm Systems.
The major's here to speak now.
All public hearing, so let me just give you a second.
Oh, there's none.
There's one.
Everyone read, everyone read the bill we got here. A couple minor changes, which, my kid's going to speak on it. We open, we open a public hearing.
Lieutenant Michael Andrews from the Fire Department, Fire Arm Superintendent. There is an ordinance before you. It's mostly cleaning up some old language that was in there. The old system we used to have was hogwired. It was on telephone poles used to run throughout the city. We no longer have that system anymore. It's all computerized and radios, much like a cellphone type signal that goes, is how it's, delivers to the fire department. The other change in there is there's a proposal to increase the fee from $125 to $200, the yearly maintenance fee, that is paid to the fire department. maintenance fee that is paid to the fire department at all. And we request that go up to 200. That hasn't been raised in at least 12 years. We've had the system a little bit more than that, and that's the original fee that was in there. We haven't been answering any questions for you.
And the other, the other big difference is the cleaning up some land, just obviously, which is most of it is that. Yeah, Jonathan?
Thank you for your presentation. Just two quick questions. The first is, under the new system, would it still operate without power? And so, my understanding is when you're hardline to the phone, it would go easier. You mentioned the signals, so would they be all right?
So, each system has a battery backup that's housed in a particular business, and it's a 60-hour backup.
Awesome, great. And then my second question was just, the mentions here, these are mostly for private systems, so would places like schools and stuff also have to pay a fee?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Actually, I'm not sure, I don't believe the schools pay the fee. It would be, I'm not sure, the city would have to answer that question, I'm not sure the arrangement that they have. What with, with the schools?
Non-governmental non-problems.
Thank you.
Yes. Tax-exempt organizations do have to pay the fee, but governmental agencies do not. So, for example, a, like, this issue was prominent, I think when this legislation passed in 2011 to be able to increase the fee, it was a way for cities and towns around to charge more money to, from colleges and universities, we're utilizing these services like fire, and this fee was collected. But for our schools, no fee.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, Lieutenant, the, this covers all lines to the department directly. This doesn't cover any private systems?
Correct, so this is a municipal system. We use City Hall, for example, they have a fire alarm system in the building, has a radio box, which, when the fire alarm in the building goes off, it automatically transmits a signal to the fire station that we receive right away. A lot of the other systems, which would be a local system you're referring to, and probably in any of the four family houses in the city, fire alarm goes off, somebody has to physically call 911, turn the plug, the alarm is going off. This only has to do with systems that are directly tied into the fire department.
Great, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Looking to approve first passage?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
By Councilman Azier. Second by Councilman Rivera. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilman Azier?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Thank you. Next slide.
Next slide is the ordinance amending chapter 40, the Central Falls Redevelopment Agency, redevelopment area, and redevelopment plan. This first reading. No one has had a call.
No one has signed it. I don't know if Peter's going to speak briefly, has Peter left the building? If there's any questions, Peter, Peter needs on the redevelopment.
He should still be here, I can.
Does anyone have any questions on the plan?
Peter will be here just a second.
Thank you, Peter, for returning. I just don't know, we're looking at first passage of your ordinance regarding the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
If anyone has any questions quickly, or not quickly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I came to the City Hall this week and I did speak to Mr. Friedrichs, and I questioned him on, we have a list, you're adding to the list properties. Right now, we, I would assume we had nine?
Correct.
And that you are including up to 21.
Correct.
And some of those properties, one has already been demolished, that street, I believe?
Yes.
Has there been any other action by the redevelopment agency on the others that
The redevelopment agency acquired 229 Washington Street, or negotiated purchase.
229?
A few months ago.
229, is that a vacant lot after St. Thomas Church?
Yes.
Okay, that goes down. Okay, it purchased it for how much? Are there any plans right now for that use, for any potential use? Are we offering it to the abutting property owners or?
The redevelopment agency issued an RFP for that property and is currently in negotiation with the developer to develop it.
Okay. You also have, is it my understanding you have the former Broad Street School that's listed also?
Correct.
Could you address any future plans? Why is that on our list? I know it was purchased by an individual for development, but I'm not sure what's transpired there. And what are, what are the city's redevelopment plans on that site?
So, this, I think, I'll speak generally, this list of properties is what we do as the next phase of lightest understanding of properties in the city that are opportunities for redevelopment, and the redevelopment agency voted to include Feigstein School because it met that criteria, and I think that all of us are very eager to see that property redeveloped.
That's 387 Broad?
Correct.
Broad Street School. Do we also have on the list the former police station?
No.
That's, why wasn't that included also?
It's a good question, that property is owned by a church. I think that, given its tax exempt status, which is something that we're looking at, I think at this time, it wasn't really what we saw as an opportunity.
Okay, can I also ask, is the property, the former school administration building on Headley Avenue, I would assume that's not included?
It is not.
And there's any reason why it's boarded up vacant right now? Is that not a property that's possibly something that the redevelopment agency should be looking at also?
I think if the council was interested in having that property added, that they could.
But is the redevelopment interested in having that?
I think, you bring up good points, and I think it could be added.
Okay, can I also ask on 147 149 Street, that's been discussed by the council since last year, that is vacant behind the post office, boarded up, they are presently using part of that property for planting, or at least a lease on part of that property. What are the plans for that?
So, the council passed the lease, to lease a portion of that property, as well as a portion of Garfield Street Park next door, to the South Side Community Land Trust for the purposes, purposes of the community garden. A lot of the physical infrastructure, the community garden has already gone in, and they've been waiting for the spring to come to install the water service, but they have been advertising blocks that are available for members of the community to utilize. And my office is currently waiting on realigning the property line between the Summer Street and Garfield Street properties to include all of the community garden in the park and make 147 Street, excuse me, 147 Summer Street available for redevelopment.
I also have to thank you, I did come in and ask for a larger map. He does have available, this was kind of very difficult to read, it's too small. I've asked in the past of submitting items, especially financial data, that it be larger type. I'm not as young as I used to be, and my eyes are not as good as they used to be, so I asked it, could we provide documentation, especially financial numbers in larger type set? Now, is the, I see Sylvia Street, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, at least six parcels of property that the redevelopment agency is looking at, we're looking at taking over almost the entire street, or the majority of the street. What are the plans for, let's say, the majority of these, that's a central part of Sylvia
So, I believe there's 29 parcels on Sylvia Street. So, this is about a fifth of those parcels, and members of councils may be aware, the city's made a concerted effort to focus on Sylvia Street. For the last several years, we've launched the Sylvia Street Better Block Initiative. We had a very large grant submission to the Working Cities Challenge, that unfortunately was not funded, but we continue to invest in community empowerment on that street. We have a residents group that's meeting monthly, and I think we view Sylvia Street as one of the next big housing opportunity focuses within the city, so that's why these properties were selected. These are, I think undoubtedly, the worst properties on Sylvia Street, and I think at this point, we think worthy of further attention by the city and the redevelopment agency.
Now, is it, is it possible, Mr. Friedrichs, that you have listed 21? Could you, I'm asking for, as a member of the council, could you, you provide further, that you provide a description, but it really doesn't say who owns them? Some of these are privately owned, some of these going through financial difficulties, some of these may be owned by the city. Could you elaborate or give us a breakdown on each of those with the address? You have the address, but a little bit of a breakdown on the property, who owns it, and what the redevelopment agency's interest in on each of these parcels? Right now, we are just broadly categorizing 21 parcels to be taken over by the redevelopment, without clarification exactly of what the intent is for those parcels. Are we looking at selling them, redeveloping them into public properties? Are we looking at taking them over, possibly some of them to city properties, utilizing for other purposes, offer them to sale to the next, or the abutting property owner? There's, let's say, clarification that could be done on each of those. On some of the descriptions, we do only, we have a meet and bounce in the address, but nothing further clarifying on the parcel itself. I support what you're doing, but I would like more clarification, more information on each of those parcels, because we're looking at 21 different parcels in the city. That's a lot for the redevelopment agency. And I may, I think there may be others that they should be looked at, such as the building here, the Headley Avenue, and there are other vacant properties throughout the city that may need addressing. Thank you.
There were several questions that rolled into one there, each of them in turn. With regard to the number, I think we've made a concerted effort to try and focus on a number of properties that the redevelopment agency has the resources to work through. Redevelopment agency is required to pay taxes on these properties while they own them, and that's a burden currently to the Central Falls taxpayers because they're the primary revenue source for the agency at this moment in time. With regard to looking at individual plans for each property, I would say that's heavily dependent upon the market. If the city has an interest in a property, for instance, 1304 High Street, that portion of Summer Street, of 147 Summer Street that I was talking about, 606 Dexter Street, for which the city has made a significant financial outlay. I think if you're looking at, you know, each of these properties, the redevelopment agency is happy to work with the city. If there's a public interest in a property, I think that's paramount, especially given that the city council was all, council's ultimate authority over the agency and their annual budget. Looking at each individual property, the redevelopment agency is tasked by state law and city ordinance with bringing properties for development that are otherwise undevolvable, and the redevelopment agency is also barred by state law from doing the actual redevelopment. So, that presents quite a challenge for the agency, it relies on partnering outside. Developers and developers usually have their own ideas about what kind of investment they want to see, so it's absolutely a give and take relationship, and, you know, we won't know what's going to happen with each property until that's been fully negotiated with each and every. With regard to the property ownership information, I don't have that at the moment, but it is widely available, public information, our tax assessor tracks all that information. We have that information available on the manager's website, which I believe is linked through the city website. If you can easily search that information. If there's specific requests for the council, I'm happy to put that on it with any council member between this meeting and next meeting to further explain that information.
Thank you, Peter. Again, keep in mind, this is just first passage, so.
Jonathan? I just want to thank Mr. Friedrichs for his work in looking over the documents. Their website's really good, it's a lot of good information. They also have public meetings. I would urge the members of this council, myself included, to attend these if we're interested. It's my understanding that each individual parcel of property has its own context that they have to navigate as they think about whether they're going to sell it, they're going to redevelop it, try to acquire it. And so, I think something for the council to consider is potentially assigning a council member to be a liaison between the council to the agency. So, if you're interested, Mr. Azier, I'd love to nominate you in the future if that's something you want to do.
All appointments are made by the chairman.
So, I guess, Peter, one of the key issues that most people are afraid of, that the city has no intention to acquire all this property by domain or things of that nature. And generally, all these properties listed, they're either a nuisance property, abandoned, no longer receiving taxes, so I guess we can classify them all as nuisance, but the only question, something I want to talk about, people say, what's the city doing? They're buying up all kinds of property, but there's good reasons why, you know? I think that's the biggest hangup, and that you would know, they're not acquiring as the intended, not to buy up all of vacant land, and most of these are nuisance or haven't paid taxes, or been abandoned, so. Those are the key issues, and I think, if you read between the lines here, you can see that in each property, like Jonathan said, on the website, we give a description about the property.
As the economic development director for the city of Central Falls, I'm very interested in finding additional tax revenue.
I'd like to make a motion to approve first passage of the ordinance amending chapter 40 on the Central Falls Redevelopment Agency.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Acosta, second by Councilman Azier, and I believe Councilman Solano. Again, any further discussion? Having none, seeing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilman Azier?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Ordinance amending chapter 12, businesses, article 10, tobacco dealers. They just added, right, C's clerk, tobacco, clarity, introduction.
So, introduce.
Ordinance amending chapter 12, businesses, article 10, tobacco dealers. Ordinance amending Chapter 12 Businesses, Article 10, tobacco dealers, and priority to national claims. Introduction.
So introduced.
Next item is the resolution supporting House bills 7766, 7075, 7591, and 7688, various acts relating to gun control.
Everyone read the resolution? And as our resolutions do supporting a bill, and the House numbers obviously are right there. And any questions on the resolution? You have a motion? A motion by Councilwoman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Figaro, and Councilman Solano to approve resolution supporting the various House bills in regards to gun control. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays. Having none, seeing none.
Present.
So introduced. So passed, I'm sorry. Mr. Luzier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
vote aye?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, our country and legislature in the state of Rhode Island are reviewing a great number of bills. I am not particularly up on each of them, but I know it has drawn thousands of people's attention to each of these bills. I, I will await to see what our General Assembly does because they have the information that I do not on these bills. And that's the reason why I voted present, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just so you know, the bills are online if you look them up.
Yep.
Next slide.
Resolution supporting school construction referendum in Article 5 and 9 of the Rhode Island State Budget.
I think you skipped the F. Yeah, you skipped resolution F.
Yeah, it's totally good. Thank you. Resolution supporting House Bill 792 relating to motor and automobile operators and chauffeurs.
Okay, again, hopefully everybody read the resolution. If there are no questions, what is your pleasure?
That is a 790.
Yeah, that's the one you were just describing.
Motion to approve the resolution supporting H 7982 and S 2678.
I think there's just, there's just one on here. Is there still a? Second. Second, yes, the second one.
Abortion?
You have a motion and a second.
Right, the second.
Correct.
Hold on to session. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to pull it up.
For context, this is the state version of DACA.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Clerk, uh, voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays. Having none, seeing none. So moved. Next slide.
Okay, now it's I and G. Resolution supporting school construction referendum in Articles 5 and 9 of the Rhode Island State Budget in 49.
Once again, has everyone reviewed this resolution?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have a question with the solicitor.
Okay.
This article is in the state budget. Being a school district, does that determination affect any, any other way than reimbursement? Is there any other changes because of the school district restrictions or whatever?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You have a motion? Rivera, second by Councilman Solano, to approve resolution before regarding school construction referendum. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays. Having none, seeing none. So, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, just a question on that. When would that, if it is passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, which reimbursement year would this cover? Starting school year 19? Fiscal year 19, so September of 18. So the beginning of the school year. Okay. Thank you.
So we have resolutions of condolences and congratulations. Of congratulations, we had several submitted by Councilman Rivera. Just read the names.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a list? Questions? If you have a list provided?
Can I read the names?
Yeah.
Estreita, Monta, Cindy Bohas, Antonia Luisa Montanaro, Ashley Beth Amaral, Kelly Colombo Cortieri, Sylvia Maria Perdomo, John Anthony Gonzalez, Jeremy Scott Fair, Emily Gator Watson, Sydney Lynn Lozelle, Natalia Navarro, Anthony John Colombo Jr., Mayen Sasha Menus, Angelina Serano, and Victoria Perdomo. These citations were for students, two professors, and two students that traveled to Puerto Rico to work over there for a weekend. They did a presentation of their trip last week at Rhode Island College.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve condolences collectively?
No.
Congratulations.
Oh, congratulations collectively.
No, Mr. Chairman.
No.
These collectively, not the rest.
I said congratulations. I corrected myself.
Motion to approve?
A motion by Councilwoman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Figaro, to approve the congratulations as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays. Aye, seven. Thank you and thank them for this.
And then we have some resolutions of condolences. And the first one is for the family of Mr. Robert Bradley Sr., who passed away on March 29. And that was introduced by Councilman Ferri. And then the other four, the next four names were introduced by Councilman Luzier, Eusef Lador, Lynn Heath, Richard Lefner, and Florence Eade.
Florence Eade Corey. Mr. Chairman, do us a correction to that. Mr. Chairman, it's Florence Eade Corey. That should have been included. I spoke to Alberto today and last week. The name should be Florence Eade Corey. Mr. Chairman, that's one of the reasons why I've asked for a listing of these, to review these, which we did not get. I make a motion to approve the resolutions that I submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Those are condolences, I believe.
Condolences.
As a collection, we have a motion by Councilman Solano. You can second it, Mr. Luzier, to approve the condolences as read and as corrected. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays. Aye, seven.
Hearing of insurrection claims, please stand aside. This is a continued business. And I do not believe we need an exact reception. This was a claim that was tabled at your last meeting. This Courtney Jacobs, 14 Marbury Avenue, Chucket.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Mr. Luzier, let the city clerk finish what she was saying, please. This is regarding the hearing which we-
For alleged damage to person property sustained on February 9, 2018.
That's regarding one of our vehicles.
Correct. This was a claim that was tabled, considered in chief court.
Is everyone familiar with, have they met the narrative? Mike is not here. Let me speak, me, at my department's point of view. Matt, did we have a discussion? Did you, you had given us a couple corrections, I believe.
Yes, Mr. President. The discussion at the last council meeting was that similar to a police department claim wherein our city officials acted within the official scope of their duties appropriately within the policies and procedures of their department. It is the city's law department and police department and fire department's opinion that the claim ought not be paid. Because, and so the analysis would be, was the responding fire vehicle acting within their official scope of their duties? Did they have their lights and sirens on? And were they acting within applicable policies and procedures of the department?
My name is Courtney Jacobs. To be honest, not sure what I'm supposed to be doing. I was polite to come. So I'm not sure if you want to hear me, what happened, or what we do most often. So I was driving down the street and just picked my son up from school, and I heard a fire truck somewhere. I was on Broad Street, so I stopped before a light. Heard the truck coming perpendicular to where I was. They came down that street and just basically took the corner too tight, and they drove up along the side of my car. Then they backed up, kind of renegotiated and drew a bond. So I pulled over and called the police and asked them to come and take a look at the accident. They did. They did the accident report. It said there was no, called somebody from the fire department and said that they did not have a different story, but they agreed with the account that I had provided.
What was the total on that? $523 of the adjustment?
$532.25.
Any questions of the, this report regarding this accident?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Courtney, are you represented by the attorney or are you representing yourself here today?
No, to be honest, this entire process has been pretty confusing. Haven't gotten sort of a straight account of what happens. The last time you had a council meeting, I got a phone call two hours before. And I was at a work event, so I couldn't be here.
And do you have, I'm trying to look for the estimate?
Yes, there's an estimate.
I think we received the last meeting. Was it included in this meeting?
Yes.
Yes, five and change.
Okay. And, Mr. Solicitor, if I could ask, because it's a council matter and not the insurance company, for Allen to look trust?
We have a deductible of $2,500. And as the claim amount is less than that amount, it falls within the discretion of the members of the council.
Do we have any testimony from the fire department to refute, to verify any information?
I spoke to Chief Bradley and to our EMS coordinator, Jared Panett, who's the driver, and to determine whether the driver was acting within his official scope and duties, if he violated any policies and procedures, if he had his lights and sirens on. And the answers to those three questions were yes, and they do not dispute that our vehicle hit Ms. Jacobs' vehicle. There's no dispute with that.
There's no dispute with that, but the recommendation from the solicitor's office is?
We are not legally liable for these damages as we were operating within the official scope of our duties. That is the legal opinion of the law department.
And your recommendation is?
It's the discretion of the members of the council as to whether you want to pay the claim. What, what I can say is that as the city's lawyer, that if we were to go to court, we would have an argument that we are not liable to pay this amount in small claims court.
Courtney, you have any comments or defense?
I don't know what to say, except I was driving down the street and a fire truck hit my car. And the fact that I wouldn't be reimbursed for that is a little bit surprising to me, but.
Any, any council member have anything further to say?
Yes, break this question.
So my question is, if somebody is driving or is parked at the corner of the street or whatever, and the fire department or the police department is on duty, hit a car that is not be riding in law, we still not assuming the responsibility to pay the damage of the vehicle that is involved in that accident?
So the legal test is, are they operating within their official capacity? Are they obeying all departmental rules, regulations? And so when you're an emergency provider that deals with things like speed and how you're navigating in a traffic situation, and third, do you have your lights and sirens on? So if all three of those are yes, the law in Rhode Island, that there's no legal liability?
Okay, there is no legal liability on the city, but we still have discretion that we can, in fact, pay this amount if the council so desires.
I think she was operating at capacity too, and she was parked. Your car was completely stopped. I think we should pay that claim.
You want to bring that to form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, seconded. We have a motion by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilman Solano, to pay the claim of 500 and change. Any further discussion? I kind of agree. It sounds like you certainly were within, within law. You did all you could. Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I would just say that we have to think about the precedent that we're setting for ourselves here. I think what happened is unfortunate, and it was not your fault. Clearly an accident would appear to be such. It's a car. Cops kill people all the time by mistake. Nig it off. Car got hit, $500. It sucks. But it was an accident. And so I think that to open the door that every time in the line of duty, something gets broken, the city's going to be liable for it, it's a little bit of a slippery slope. So just caution the council against going forward and not coming off as hypocrite. I'll tell you right now, I'm voting aye.
Okay. The thing is, I think every case is different. I think every case is, every case is treated differently. And listen to the, what's before us. I think there's two sides to that argument, that we may or may not be setting a precedent. It sounds like she did all she could to just say, that's the way it goes. I don't think it's correct either. But again, if we take every case different, I think we can come to good conclusions, common sense conclusions. Therefore, with that, I kind of support the idea of paying this amount. Anyone else? Roll call vote.
Councilman Ferri?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Present.
Councilman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilman Luzier?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess she would see you.
We will be in touch when the payment's ready for you.
Next slide. Next time.
It's a presentation by Mr. Julian Finkel of the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council regarding the Broad Street Regeneration Initiative.
Could I ask that we jump ahead quickly to, we have two items on the new, yes, please. I know Jessica's here and...
So the first one is, this is City Council sitting as Board of License Commissioners. This is item eight on the new business. We have to be by employee. One is by Foster Ford, Foster Family Improvement on June 16, 2018.
That's okay. We'll take it quickly, Jessica.
And it is an interim license.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Vega. We're here representing Foster Ford. And there is a mistake. The actual date is June 9th with a rain date of June 10th.
Give Mrs. Jacobs a year.
Yeah, it was wrong on the agenda.
It's right on the agenda.
Oh, okay. And just to give everyone some context, basically Foster Ford, we're a nonprofit agency and we work with children and families affected by foster care. We do not place children into foster care. We support the offer of services. So the purpose of this block party, our foster parent improvement event, is to spread awareness and in hopes as well to get some folks on board with becoming foster parents and mentors. Any questions?
I think it's going to be super. I, to be honest, I have to recuse myself from voting because I am kind of involved with the event, although it has to go in at least, so I will recuse myself, but it's going to be a wonderful day. Any questions?
So turn over the chair to someone else.
I can't. Not just for the vote, just recusing from the vote.
And any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions?
What's the top rule?
We have a motion by seconded, Councilman Biggers, and Councilman Solano, and Councilman Costa.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Although the favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as having. Thank you.
I don't know. There was a group of people before here that they left. I don't know what type of business-
That was the mayor's youth council. They were just here to observe the meetings. The mayor's youth council, they sat in front and they had, they hadn't dealt with it. Yeah, that was the mayor's youth council.
The next one. The next license is for three, three licenses for the same business, classic variety, restaurant and tobacco. And it's for business, main business ROs at 791 Lonzo Avenue.
And they're here. They're here, you see?
Aye. My name is Wissab Kamil. I live in Central Falls, 25th Road, 3rd Street. Would be the first business in Central Falls or Rhode Island would be pizza drive-through and convenience store. Drive-through pizza and convenience store.
Drive-through?
Yes, and convenience store. Would be first business on Rhode Island.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, give him a chance.
Yes, it used to be the first, the first donut shop on Rhode Island, actually, the old donut shop. So it exists everything, just we changed the business from donut shop to pizza and convenience store.
Mr. Solicitor, you have a question on the apple?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is my ward, Tariq Allem Bassadlin. You have, you said two or three other businesses in Rhode Island?
Yes, we do.
What's the name?
We do have Deluxe Market and we have Station One Market in Menden Avenue, at Emo's Avenue, Providence. And we do have, family have a big business, love for all shot here, San Jacinto location on Rhode Island. 280 feet.
Congratulations. Now, the donut shop, you're taking over. The end of the building had a window. You're going to be utilizing that window for pizza?
Yeah, it's not, it used to be drive-through. You don't change nothing with it. Still exists everything the same, just we do some remodeling, change tire, fix some sealant, some stuff, that's it.
Are you going to be opening up a restaurant also?
It's nothing to be eaten, everything taken out.
Everything is taken out, not inside.
Similar to Little Caesar Pizza, it's going to be part of our pizza, just to go, drive through, you order a new pizza, five hundred pizza. If you like to get jam and milk with it, we'll pass it to you. If you like that soda, you can get a secret bar, so we can, you can take back.
And you're applying for a tobacco license?
Yes.
Do we have a tobacco license, Judge Court? Tobacco license?
Yes.
Do we have one?
Yes, that's on our agenda, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, sure. And my question to you, as you apply, we are working business in Central Falls. But my question to you, are you aware of what is the distribution of tobacco patches here in the city of Central Falls?
Yes.
You are?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve.
Wait, anyone else? Anyone else have a question?
I just was conferring with our city clerk and our planning director because I know that a drive-through requires especially use permit in the city. And the question was whether zoning determination letter had been filed with the application. So that's what we are conferring about.
I don't have the file in front of me, but we've gone by precedent, so the use of the business does not change. We do not require a zoning determination letter since the donut shop was there, after that, there was another restaurant that was there for a few months, and now this business, and it went from restaurant to restaurant to restaurant, we did not require these determination letter. But I am willing to discuss that.
Mr. Rika?
I was wondering if the city solicitor could remind us of the distance requirement from a school? I was trying to look it up online and I couldn't find it. The closest, you give me 60 seconds, I can tell. Yeah. Closest school is Blackstone Valley Prep, which is at the intersection of Lonzo and Dexter.
I found it, just kidding. It's 250 feet. Well, our range.
We checked it out, Mr. Rika.
Anyone else? We do have a motion by Councilman Zep to approve. Seconded by Councilman Solano. Any further discussion?
Question, when do you look at opening the business?
Soon would approve me. Actually, the store had already opened months ago and we was late last hearing, so we have to wait. The store had stopped with everything, just we missed the amount.
Congratulations. Any good? How about we take the signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair will tie. Harry now seeing on the ice, have it. Best of luck. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Can I return back to item 6H resolutions of Central Falls City Council, congratulations, Mr. Chairman? I appreciate the items that were placed on the agenda, but I requested additional resolutions, congratulations, that have not been acted on for two months now. On March 12th, I submitted a resolution establishing our American Heritage Month for April 2018. I submitted that and it's not on the agenda, it has not been acted on. And I believe also the Red Cross Month, March 2018. I also requested, last week I added two individuals who became citizens, a congratulatory resolution to them, Reverend Alan Shelton and his wife, Husna. Shelton, residents of Central Falls, the pastor of St. Ephrims Church, they have been excluded from the resolutions. I've also asked in the past that to be include resolutions for the inductees into the Central Falls High School Warriors Hall of Fame. I submitted one name first of Louis Tager, then I submitted the rest of the names. They have not been acted on, Mr. Chairman. And there are other items that have not been acted on, Mr. Chairman, that have been submitted to the clerks, to you and to the clerk's office. I ask that they be included for action on the city council. There were other resolutions. I'm not sure of the condoneses. I'll have to go back.
I think the Red Cross was on. I thought I saw that somewhere. And you, going back to the Hall of Fame, I know their banquet's coming up in May, and you had a correction, Gail Turgeon.
Correct.
Just a correction on the name. I don't know.
But that we haven't acted on.
I don't know if that's enough to do to make a correction on the name.
The name, the name I submitted were a list of all the inductees into the Hall of Fame. We haven't acted on them.
Oh, this coming banquet?
What I submitted was one name which we acted on, Louis Tager. I submitted additional names. Then I sent in a correction of a spelling on one of the names that they told me was incorrect and they corrected the, and I submitted those, Mr. Chairman. I think I also submitted something for the Navy and Credit Union Business Owners Meeting that have not been acted on. And, Mr. Chairman, there are other requests that I've submitted that have not been acted on. I request that they review the notices requesting the resolutions and they all be included at the next meeting. I had resolutions recognizing the state of the independence of Lebanon, as we do recognize other countries. I also submitted other requests, Mr. Chairman. I, at this time, asked that it be included, they all be included by the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, may I also ask that when you have a resolution, that you give a little background?
I did.
There's a couple, I mean, you have a birthday for somebody over, you know, 97 years old or superior. You get like a little background.
It's just, congratulations her on her 97th birthday, Mr. Chairman. Longtime resident of-
You have different celebrations, but I saw a couple that were, you know, we're celebrating this or that. I mean, Independence Day and that. Just put the actual date of the independence-
I have it included in it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, will you move on to the agenda?
Absolutely.
We're going to take, make sure we're taken care of at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Finkel, you ready? This is a presentation I had announced a second ago. It's by Mr. Julian Finkel of the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council, and it's regarding the Broad Street Regeneration Initiative.
Thank you for your patience.
Simon was tabled at your last council meeting.
That's right.
Well, thank you so much for having me. I have a PowerPoint presentation. I think you all have copies of it. But I do want to tell you about the project that the city of Central Falls has involved with all the Broad Street Regeneration Initiative. So just to remind everyone what we're talking about when we talk about Broad Street, it is, you know, runs right through Central Falls. It starts at the intersection of Mendon Road up in Cumberland and comes all the way down into Pawtucket. And we are talking about our road improvement project, which I'll talk about in a second. That project ends at the Exchange Street intersection of Pawtucket. If you're talking about Broad Street completely ends at the intersection of Main Street in Pawtucket. But if you think about this whole road as an entire corridor, you can actually think about it going all the way down to the Apex site. So the regeneration initiative actually started back in 2007. And now that we are back, we're actually calling it 2.0. So when we talk about the first effort, we refer to it as 1.0. And that was the Blackstone Valley Tourism Council, they received a Preserve America grant to do some revitalization work, looking at historic preservation, facade improvement, business growth and other things. They created an action plan, which is still available on the website, and was staffed by some Americor Vista workers until that program was restructured in 2012. And it was kind of low up until, move forward, in 2015, when the cities of Central Falls, Pawtucket and the town of Cumberland, looking at their state transportation improvement program projects. I mean, the projects get prioritized and Peter, here in the Central Falls Planning Department, realized that Broad Street was listed on all three of these prioritization lists. And to combine them together, we could actually make a very strong patient. And so this project was approved and it's in the state step, they call it. And so the tourism council said, hey, let's revive this group we had, this initiative, we can call it 2.0, and we can not only work on this road improvement project, we can use it as an opportunity to accomplish some other goals that we had been working on since 2007. So, okay. So back in 1.0, there were a variety of different partners that were involved, different nonprofits and agencies. And we have now expanded our committee to include not only the three municipalities, but 14 other agencies and organizations that are really invested in what we have going on. They come to our monthly meetings and give us input. And it's really a chance to increase collaboration, not just among the three municipalities, but also with all of these partners. So I am here because working with three different municipalities is challenging in and of itself, but then to bring in all these other partners, a lot to, a lot of different people to coordinate. So the Rhode Island Foundation was kind enough to give us a grant to hire me, a part-time contract coordinator. And that was about one year ago. It was last March. And so this, we've reapplied for another year of funding. And at this point, we're still waiting to hear back on that application. Some of the things that we accomplished over the past year, I wanted to share with you. One goal was to consolidate the communications about the project. And so we created a logo that encompasses the three, the three cities. We use the logo when we're doing press releases. We can do them jointly. We have a website for the project, Facebook page, and other communications. And we actually set out a mission and vision statement. And I won't read it to you, but basically we're looking at economic development, creating a thriving commercial corridor, since that's what Broad Street really is, and celebrating our cultural diversity, nurturing our community prosperity, enabling tourism and enhancing quality of life. So we're also working on updating that action plan I mentioned, identifying the goals that are, have been accomplished, the ones that are still relevant and which are going to be our priorities simultaneous to the work on the road itself. We did a comprehensive survey, which I'll mention. There was a substantial average to our businesses all along the corridor. There are almost 200 of them. And I did have some help. Couple men with air came with me one day. We had to have a good credit meeting come with me sometime. And so we also created a website. We have a blog. And so, we also created a website, we have a blog. Don't press releases, we have, as I said, social media. Trying to collect contact information from those businesses so we can communicate about the project and let them know about other resources that are available. We had a public meeting, I think some of you were able to attend. That was last November, it was a tri-community public meeting where we were able to share some concept drawings that the three municipalities had created as guidance for Ride Out before the project officially launched, highlighting the priorities that were mentioned in that survey. We've been doing some presentations, such as just recently at the Grow Smart, the Rhode Island Power Place Summit, that was just last week, where we talked about Broad Street, sharing what we're doing. People around the state are looking at this project as a model of inner jurisdictional cooperation, collaboration. We supported the Central Falls Green and Complete Street Initiative and also started a partnership with Roger Williams University to have their urban planning students use Broad Street as their fall semester project. So, the survey I mentioned was really targeting our, that road improvement project that we're working on through this, with the state. We were asking about the public and the businesses' priorities about that project. We were able to collect 128 surveys, which 104 of them were usable. Really, it was online, it was distributed door-to-door along Broad Street. We were at a couple of different events trying to get surveys. And it was also publicized in the mayor's newsletters and the city websites and the newspaper. So, this is just a little snapshot of while people responded. 87% of the residents either lived or worked in one of our three communities. 20% of them lived or worked in Central Falls. Their most important issues that they commented on were pedestrian safety and traffic congestion, which were reflective of the priorities that the planning departments also had identified. And their least important priority they marked was on-street parking, which was interesting. Also, at the bottom of the list was place comability and trees and planting. But I would want to mention that although they were ranked as the least priority, they had lots of comments in the comments section, which I couldn't capture here in the straight percentages, but those comments were, people felt very strongly in favor of those items. And so, just a reminder, this is that concept sketch that was created for Central Falls. This is the intersection of Broad Street and Cross Street. The idea was to show Ride Out and show the public what could be accomplished through this project. And so, that is the images that was created. And to let you know the schedule, as it stands right now, we're in the design phase. It's still very early in the design process. We're about to reach the approximate 10% mark. The design will continue through spring and summer. Looking at probably doing public comment with meetings during the summer. Because the project is set to go out to bid in September, with construction scheduled to start next February. And it would be two full construction seasons worth of work on the road itself, possibly even going into a third in the spring of 2021. The bridges along the street, as you know, are considered separate projects and they have separate timelines. One of them is more in line with ours, perhaps six to 12 months behind, but the others are, would be further out and be done later. And for reference, the train station is scheduled to open in 2020. And so, provided that we get funded for another year, we're looking at continuing to collaborate with our partners, continue to work on our STIP project, doing a lot more outreach to our businesses and residents, make sure they are kept up to date on what is going on, especially with regards to the construction schedule. And we're also looking at doing some joint marketing and promotion for the small businesses and maybe even some placemaking events in our programs. And I did mention that other groups around the state are looking at us as a model. And I think one of the reasons why is this working, this working together of different municipalities on the same project. You really have a chance to share vision and work together towards some shared goals and also share information about other projects as well as this one. What's nice is because we meet monthly, we are able to talk about everything that's going on in the three different municipalities, not just this. And so, when other areas of collaboration are identified, it can happen early on and be really effective and useful. It also helps share the load and make sure with having the coordinator that the project continues to move forward. Like any project, we're not without challenges. This year, we didn't have a dedicated budget to the project itself. We tried to address that in our fair application for next year. Of course, scheduling all the different partners has been a challenge, there's so many of them. Coordinating the different priorities and programs among three different municipalities. There's also some fragmentation of organizations such, that provide business services and other things that we want to coordinate with. And then just the challenge of creating a shared identity when you're really dealing with such a long area, the road is 3.2 miles long. However, I really feel that working together is worthwhile and great. And this is a photo from the January award ceremony of the Rhode Island Chapter of the American Planning Association, where our project received an award for outstanding neighborhood planning. So, I'm very proud of that, passed that award around so you can see. And I'm happy to take any questions.
This is a great project. So, it's gonna be ready by 2020?
Hopefully, either 2020 going into spring of 2021 is the target.
2021?
Yes.
I like the logo too. Good, good job.
Thank you.
Yes, Congressman Figaro says it's a great project that's been going on since 11 years ago, right? 2007?
Yeah.
And we wish to see that completed. And the presentation here, for this year, it has no budget.
Well, we're still waiting to hear. We've applied for a grant from the Rhode Island Foundation. We should hear really any day. They told us it could take as little as four weeks, let's know, but it could take as many as 10. So, I'm here in the meantime and we'll just hope that that comes through.
Thank you for your visitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. I think we have a gentleman here in council, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've been, you've also been very, very patient, thank you.
It's no problem. Thank you again for having me tonight, sir, council members. My name's Dakota Jacobowitz, I reside at 176 Bay Spring Avenue in Barrington, Rhode Island. 02806, I'm applying for a constable's license. I'm currently a silver prior in the city of Providence, like I pass this around while cuffed up. Investigate given legal recovery services, I'm looking at 24 Corolla Street, block 6241. Basically, I'm looking to expand services on a small scale, possibly later on, just gain experience and possibly later on, move on to possibly a state constabulary license, sir. I'm looking just to start small, get experience.
I think it's very simple, there's only one qualification, I guess, is the Attorney General. I just need form for the Attorney General, I believe.
The BCI was certified.
A BCI, oh, it was?
Yes. I do have other certifications as well, other products I own, brought with me, currently from the state of Kansas.
I think that's the only requirement. Anyone else, as long as you get that BCI check, I don't see a problem.
Mr. Chairman, normally we grant the constable licenses to residents, people who have businesses in the city. You do not live in the city, you do not have a business in Central Falls. I'm just concerned of why you chose Central Falls when you could have gone to Barrington or Providence? Because you live in Barrington and you have a business in Providence. You have no relationship here in Central Falls.
The reason is because I've actually had done volunteer work with multiple other in Pawtucket, Central Falls, Cumberland as well. And one of the things was that multiple state cities in the state do not honor special constables anymore. They want you to move up to a state level now. And the problem is, I'd rather, because I spoke to a lady in the DVR. She said it could take up to three years for you to get your license, including training and everything else. And I do feel is that that time could be used to gain education and the knowledge on a smaller scale. Like I told the lady in the city clerk's office, I'm looking basically to move on to a statewide service and process. I'm looking to start small, as I said before.
You have, your business is all cuffed up investigative in legal recovery services in Providence?
Yes.
Dakota Jacobowitz?
Jacobowitz, yes.
Your address here is a 24 Corolla Street, which as I assume is the post office?
Yes, it is, sir.
You have a box number 6241. Do you have a business address?
No, currently, right now, we're in the planning stages of the business and we're working on towards more certifications, sir. As well, I also can attest, because I brought my father, to attest to some of the experience I have. Also, experience in skip tracing as well, sir.
What I'd like to say to the council is that, he's just starting out, he was in college, he's working his way up. There's probably an office here in town.
Could you get my conference?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm his dad, my name is Earl Jacobowitz. And he's in college and he's working on growing in his own way. And as a parent, I'm supposed to support him because that's my responsibility. And what I'm trying to do is get him to start a little business here in a small little town, get a little office and work his way up. So, he's doing it all on his own and I'm behind him 100%. And I just hope the town would have been that way also, because he is young and he's starting to grow. And children there are future, like those kids that were here on your today.
I can compliment you. My concern as a constable is where we grant licenses to city residents, businesses in the community. I'm not saying we are, we don't, we are not allowed to grant you a license, but a constable usually is something that is in service in Central Falls, in a business in Central Falls, so practicing in Central Falls. You are not doing any of those right now. And I'm just, I would recommend that you go to Barrington where you live, in Providence where you work, out of the post office box, to get a license there. Personally, I would rather see that than having Central Falls, which you have no, you don't live here, you don't have a business here, to grant you a constable license because of your residence in Barrington and your business in Providence. That's, as a council, that's my concern.
I understand your concern, sir. I greatly agree 100%. But the thing is that now that the new laws are coming in through the Attorney General, through the court system, through the state and the court system, in the federal courts, Supreme Court of Rhode Island, they're now pushing everybody, and not many states are recognized, not many cities and municipalities in Rhode Island are recognizing special constables or town constables are also on block island, they're called town sergeants, block island sergeant. They're not recognizing them anymore, they're basically phasing them out. And I hope, out of me signing up, I hope to push also for other residents in the city to also want to get involved in the constability of Central Falls. And also promote to, even the young, even people my age to at least start working in, wanting to work in the legal system and at least start getting a knowledge somewhere. Because this next semester is my last semester at CRI and I'm going for law enforcement. And I'd like, I'd like to put a push in for everybody. Thank you.
That's it. I'd like to ask a question, let's obviously, what is the opinion on that application?
The renowned general law is 45-16-8 election of special town constables. And it provides that, just like you do, I believe, every January? Every January? The city council may award a constable license. That license can only be utilized within the boundaries of the city. So, if you give him a constable license, he can't use that Central Falls license in Providence or Block Island anymore. It would just be if he's serving a document here in the city of Central Falls. The requirement is for a BCI check. The gentleman is right, the state process is much more intense and much more rigorous and much more of a closed circle. You have to have letters from current members of the bar, I think, at least two attorneys.
Two attorneys and you have to be trained by a constable as a 10-year service to the independent.
So, you have to have someone who's already a constable willing to train you and it's very difficult to break into that, to that club. And so, that's the state, that's the state process. But this is the city and town process and it is in your discretion as the council.
Well, of course, thank you, thank you very much. I just, one question I have, you would just, so your intent, perhaps, is just to go to the cities and towns that you think you might be eventually operating in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I think the solicitor was clear, if you get a license here, then it's just for Central Falls and if you're looking at Pawtucket, obviously, you gotta go there.
Yes, sir.
And do we, Madam Clerk, do we have his BCI?
I guess.
Let me do it. I'm gonna say, I think, I think the intent here is a good one. I don't think there's any deceit here, if that's what anybody said. He's not trying to just grab one here so we can go here and there with it. As the city solicitor said, it's just for Central Falls.
Yes, sir.
But I think your intentions are good. And that's basically all I have to say, you go?
Yes, well, I know we are business friendly and as Mr. Lacy mentioned that, that he doesn't live here, but we have other owners, business owners too, that don't, you know, don't live in our city. So, I would like to just make a motion, please support.
Councilman Big, I'm sorry, forget order, I'm sorry. I'd just like to also agree with you 100% because, what I was looking at too is a, I guess, in a business sense as well, is the fact that, for example, I checked the list, most constables come out of the metro area of Providence. I've done a check on it. I think that if, for example, you allow the license, I, even if it's on the basis, I think it could help others. Because I didn't even know that they had special constable license. So, I spoke to a lady in the Providence City Hall, she said, we don't honor it, most states don't. And we said, we think there should be a push for them again because of the fact that we keep the towns eligible.
You should update your cleaner now or your phone might be.
Sorry, we keep everybody eligible for that right to start a business. Also, keep kids that are, I saw coming out of high school, maybe they want on the law enforcement and start.
Second, I second.
We have a motion by Congressman Figaro, second by Councilman. Any further discussion? Here we go.
No, I just want to say, I mean, piggyback, my cousin remember that, I mean, even though Mr. Lacy is not living here and figure, oh, I say that there's some business owner, definitely live here either. I mean, if he wants to sell, it's more like he's saying, he want to grow up, why not? So, I also second that motion.
All those in favor, sing the part I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye? Nate? Mr. Lacy, Nate?
Nate?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to explain?
Yeah, I think you did, I think you explained as well.
Had a business in the city, I would vote to approve you, but don't. And that's why we just, we have to recognize the business owners in Central Falls. You came and opened up the business here, I'm very happy.
You're all set, you're all set, sir. And you see Sonia, the city.
Thank you. Can I just?
You're approved.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, you go, yeah, absolutely. Note, Councilman Figaro and Councilman Rivera, as previous engagement. At 8:11.
Wait, we're on the other side of. So, your, my presentation?
Good luck.
Regarding Central Falls monuments, we came out of the request and a presentation that was passed by the council.
All right, you go.
How many snakes you killed in the street? How many snakes you killed?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Trey, thank you for your attention.
No problem, no problem. So what you have in front of you, I made a paper map at the request of Councilman Acosta. I made a paper map that's detailed, that shows all of the monuments in the city of Central Falls. And I also gave you all a list of all the monuments, and I also put together interactive walking tour, which you can access that online, and it will be added to the city's website. And it shows like the various pictures, like I went all around the city, and I took pictures of the various. I took pictures of various monuments within the city, and I put information as far as like where, who dedicated them, what they were dedicated to, when the year of dedication. Does the council move there?
The chairman allows a question? Thank you. Trey, thank you very much, I stopped by planning the pocket, and I took a look at the listing, but there are a couple you're missing.
Okay.
You're missing at the corner of Washington and Cowden Street, it's a veterans monument to three veterans. I know it was rededicated, it was dedicated in the 80s, and I was president at the dedication. It was a cousin of mine who died, Nissany. Albinanta, and another, in the corner there. Should be included, corner of Washington and Cowden, on the Washington Street side. Also, on Broad Street, at the Broad Street School Building, which is presently Mr. Yips. There is a, on the side of Cross Street, there is a big bush. But in between that bush originally was a monument that was dedicated after the Oklahoma bombing. There was, I think during my term as mayor. So that is another memorial dedicated to the Oklahoma bombing. It's grown over by the bush, but the granite blocks were dedicated to Oklahoma. There is, you have Maycomber Stadium, but possibly also listed a Saul Tallow Field on High Street. That was rededicated during the 90s by me as mayor at the time. You do have the walkway in the Drinks Park, dedication there. Pierce Park and River Walk, you do have. But those are the yellow ones that I think of, and I think, I would recommend you talk to the Veterans Council. There may be other memorial monuments throughout the city that we may be missing. Polaski, I think is one, is that's on?
They had one down on High Street.
On High, on High Street. So if we're gonna do a list, we should be comprehensive and include those, so I would recommend that you include those that I gave you, took them down. I'm sure the city clerk will have a listing of all the ones that I mentioned to add.
Okay, thank you.
Trey, thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
There's a little difference here, you did just a monument, it's not plaques. We have a number of plaques that are, you know, plaques itself rather than a full monument. Your Kavanaugh Square for one, and then your Assured Nate, there's a plaque on the corner of Hunt and Illinois Street, so that's the difference. But I ended, you did your research on monuments, and you did a lot of work, thank you. But there are plaques, but that's not what Jonathan asked for anyway. You weren't looking at plaques, drugs plaques, there's probably another half dozen out there.
About the council, I just want to thank Mr. Scott for his efforts. I think this is something that will live long beyond his time with the city and our time in elected office. I would ask that, if possible, the city clerk could forward some of these links to our local schools, so that as we think about summer programming, field trips and things like that, we can make sure that our kids grow up knowing what monuments are located in their city and being proud of their city. So thanks again, I really appreciate it.
And then we include the ones that we mentioned. I would also look into the island, the River Island. I'm not sure if that was taken over from the state DEM, and it's, I think it's the only, it's our only island as part of Central Falls.
Thanks again, Trey, thank you for your patience, appreciate it, thank you.
Minutes!
So it is a total of records, I have three minutes, February 12th and February 26th. Those were tabled prior to the last meeting, and then March 12th, from the last meeting, and your adjutant.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I think I commented already at the beginning of the meeting regarding the minutes. They, in my opinion, if I'm accurate, do not, do not include the discussions that replaced the questions that were asked and the answers that were provided, as I requested. And I request again that my comments or any council comments be included in the minutes. Not broadly categorized, but if the council asks questions, I believe that is wrong, Mr. Chairman, and I object, and I object to the minutes that they are not, they are not complete. And because they are not complete, Mr. Chairman, I vote that we table them until they are corrected.
We have a motion by Councilman Luzier. Once again, table the minutes of the meeting.
To correct.
Oh, three dates? Make this three dates, there was two, yeah.
You want to do them collectively, we can do that, Mr. Chairman.
We'll do them collectively.
That's fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to table, is there a second? Hearing none, seeing none, the motion dies. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes collectively of February 12th, 26th, and March 12th.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait for a motion or do a.
Motion to approve collectively.
We have a motion by Councilman, it's allowed to approve collectively. Is there a second? Second. Second by Councilman Acosta under discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the, you want to take the first one? How old do you like, Mr. Chairman?
The motion is to approve correctly.
Mr. Chairman, I, as I stated in the previous, there are errors in the minutes. They are not complete, they do not purport to provide the questions of the council and the answers. They are not factual or complete, and they should be corrected and amended prior to us voting on it. I cannot support them, Mr. Chairman, they are wrong.
Thank you. My only comment is I thought these minutes were above and beyond what is required. With that, we'll call the.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Luzier?
No.
Councilman Talon?
Yes. I just want to remind the council that we will use that date of April 23rd. We'll have a gentleman there regarding the audit, and I've been doing some thinking over the last half hour, so that perhaps we could put the ordinance that were, we didn't allow discussion on tonight, perhaps we could put it on April 23rd, move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we not include anything besides financial. I think we're gonna have enough discussion financially, and we shouldn't take any further time with other aspects. There is a lot to discuss regarding the audit report, and we should solely just listen to that, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation.
I'll give it some thought, Mr. Luzier, but I want to talk to the attorney, the battle advocates to their concern. I'll think that over, you'll know in due time, on the 23rd, put that on your calendar. Jonathan?
Can we also make sure that in the announcement for the meeting on the 23rd, that the public knows whether or not they'll be allowed to comment on the audit?
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, is the promotional here?
Motion to adjourn.
Very well done, Mr. Chairman.
I just gave the good word to the 23rd, that's all I have, did you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman has a former member, the American Red Cross. I was happy to be invited to receive a citation or recognition from them. There is also a program which I will be involved with in the city of Central Falls. I will notify the mayor's office regarding smoke detectors to be provided to residents in the city through the American Red Cross. I also ask that resolutions of congratulations and condolences that I previously submitted be included in the next meeting, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to comment on the death of former Deputy Chief Robert Bradley, the father of five Chief Bradley. I have known them all my life, Mr. Chairman. I worked with Bob's mother here at City Hall, she was a secretary in the city clerk's office and worked with me. I worked with Bob as the deputy chief on the fire, on Police Department. Grew up with his family, he was a true professional. The city has lost a good man. There were also, there were also individuals that I added to the condolence list that didn't include, weren't included and from February 24th. Suzanne Gazelle Burns, Sue Burns was the former executive director of the Central Falls Housing Authority, she died on February 16th. Sue's husband was a policeman in Central Falls for many years, notably one of the fearless four, and raised their children at the corner of Illinois and School, I believe. Also, we lost Alice P. Shaki Newman. Alice Newman was the wife of the former city solicitor councilman in Central Falls, Bob Newman. Her son, she passed away on February 16th. Her son is the major in the city of Pawtucket Police Department, and her other son is a captain on the Pawtucket Police Department. We also lost on February 17th, Robert Tebow, resident of Ward 5, property owner and businessman in the city. And I also listed Lucinda Lucy Cardoza Mann. Lucy grew up in Central Falls, got married and moved to Cumberland, her family. Her brother was a police officer in Central Falls. Her sister, Terry Cardoza Moniz, I went to school with her, and she worked in the city hall for over 20 something years in the finance department. All of these individuals, we should be, recognize them with condolence. Also, on February 24th, I listed the remaining names of the Central Falls Warriors Hall of Fame. They were all listed. I also, on, on the March 12th, the Red Cross month, on March 12th, I submitted a resolution in detail, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Luzier, this is good and welfare.
Correct, these are the Arab American Heritage Month for April. These are all individuals that, and items that we want to recognize that part of our community and our, and our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we have a motion to adjourn, we stand in chair at 8:29, thank you.